Good evening. Welcome to City of Sugar Land City Council. Before I start tonight, I wanted to comment about what I'm seeing during this election. I've been the mayor now for nine years. I've been on council for four. I was on P and Z for eight. I have never seen so much misinformation and lies about anything that the city or the city council's been involved with, ever. I know some of the candidates are here. Some of them are participating in that, and I want it to stop. If it doesn't stop, I'm going to call you out individually at council meetings and discuss the facts, which is what I'm going to cover right now. The power plant. We seem to have this love of a power plant that was terminated in March of this year. There's no other, there's no other plan for a power plant, not going to be a power plant. So let's end the dialogue and quit trying to get people all excited about something that's not ever going to be, period. Let's talk about some of the other things that have been out there. The tax rate. Tax rate was approved unanimously by the city council. The tax rate is thirty-five, three-two-one. We had two bond referendums, one in 2019 for ninety-one million, one this past November for three-hundred-and-fifty million. It was approved unanimously by city council. Both of those included tax increases. Those tax increases go with the budget. So when the council takes up the budget and the CIP every year, council gets to establish that tax rate. That was unanimous both times. Let's talk about, talk about the gondola since everybody seems to be all worked up about that. The gondola was merely an application, an application to federal funding to see if a preliminary feasibility study could be done. Nobody's committed capital funds. There's, it's not on the capital improvement plan. So let's, let's quit spreading that information out there. For those of you that are recording this, don't worry about it. It's being live streamed. So everybody's going to get to hear it. Let's talk about, what else do we have here? Oh, let's talk about the delay in the surface water treatment plan. The City of Sugar Land staff, actually Chris Stubing, myself, and Greg Wine, who sits on the Subsidance District, looked at data or the lack of data, and at one time, there was a thirty percent requirement to do another thirty percent expansion for surface water treatment. We looked at the data. There wasn't any. We said, that doesn't seem reasonable. We got the Fort Ben County Mayor's Association under Charlie Jessup, and in Charlie's leadership, we went to the Subsidance District Board and got them to suspend that. Wasn't done by a council member. It was done by a group of mayors from Fort Ben County and a consultant. So let's set the record straight so that everybody knows what the facts are, so that we're not making decisions in the public based on lies and innuendo. I'm now going to go ahead and open the council meeting. And first on the agenda is the invocation. Rick, would you give us the invocation?
Great. Would you please pray with me? Thank you, Heavenly Father, for this opportunity to serve the citizens of Sugar Land as we are members of this council. May we be filled with wisdom, discernment, and knowledge to navigate the challenges and opportunities before us. Grant us the strength to listen to one another with respect and empathy, and to work together to make the right and best decisions for the city and for all of its residents. I also ask a special blessing on the staff, and especially for the safety of our first responders. Lord, we appreciate your grace and mercy that you provide to us daily. Please guide and direct all that we do, and may our city thrive, and may we always act with integrity and compassion. In your name. Amen.
Thank you, Rick. And now I'm going to ask down Jalen Sims, Vanessa Ong, and Damila Sadeka. If you guys could come down and give the pledge. Did I miss somebody? Are there others? Okay. Come on down. There y'all. Great. Pleasure to meet y'all. Thank y'all. Who wants to start? We've got the United States. Why don't we do the pledge of the nation's flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honoring Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
We've got a number of recognitions tonight. On the, first up is going to be the Sugar Land Regional Airport, and we've got the Kempner High School Art Contest. Kenneth, I'm gonna let you introduce it for us. He's our Assistant Director of Aviation. Come on down. Come on.
All right. So good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens, and staff. I'm reading just for Beth. If I go off script, she gets pretty upset. So, all right. So we're here to recognize.
Never got upset when you go off script. This is all the time.
Okay, all right. So we're here to recognize three Kempner High School students, Ms. Jalen Sims, Ms. Vanessa Ong, and Ms. Damiola Sadek, who placed first, second, and third in the first ever Sugar Land Regional Airport Kempner High School Art Contest 2024-2025. This art contest was part of a two-phase community engagement effort. First, students would get a chance to learn about the airport and its value and contribution to our community through participation in the art contest. Second, once selected, and they were selected first, second, and third place, they would illustrate a 24-page children's book that tells the story of the airport through the efforts of three airport heroes. Ms. Sally Sims, who will stand now, thank you. Ms. Ann Gaines, who couldn't be here, and Ms. Beth, Beth Rosenbaum, who worked her way up from Donut Girl at Needville with a master's degree to Director of Aviation. Yeah, you're welcome, Beth. Throughout the story, citizens learned the value and benefit of the community that the airport provides through collaboration. I think, Beth, Beth, you need to come down as well. None of this would be possible. Oh, okay. Let's come over here. None of this would be possible without, without the efforts of the students and the parents and the educators that stand behind them and invest in them. Mr. Ray Montez, who's also here, would like to come on down. Ms. Alyssa Mendiola, who couldn't be here, from Kempner High School Art Department. They drove this. They did everything. They were enthusiastic about it. I mean, we met with them, I want to say eleven months ago, and we picked this city council meeting to have a completed children's book that tells the story of these great ladies and what they did to build the airport. So that's it. Now we can read the, we can read this now.
It's always interesting when I give you the mic. Sugar Land Regional Airport Kempner High School Art Contest. Whereas in 2023, Sugar Land Regional Airport staff created the Sally, Ann, and Beth Building Airport. A children's book designed to educate the community on the airport's role and impact by highlighting the contributions of three young women inspired by real Sugar Land citizens to its success as Texas premier general aviation airport. And whereas after struggling to find an illustrator, project gained momentum in the spring of 2024 when Mayor Zimmerman, I didn't know I did this, recognized a local student's artwork at a Tech Dot, I do remember that, at Tech Dot Aviation Division Event, leading to a collaboration with Kempner High School Art Students. And whereas an art contest launched in August the 12th of 2024 invited students to illustrate the book with winners earning recognition, portfolio opportunities, and financial incentives. And whereas this initiative fosters artistic development and civic pride by engaging local students in a meaningful community project. Congratulations to the three of you. Council members?
Okay. Count you down. Three, two, one. One more. Three, two, one.
Our next recognition is Building Safety Month for May of 2025, and we have Dwayne Zvatek, our Master Code Professional. Joshua Doyle, our Chief Building Official is going to introduce the topic. Yes, sir.
If I could, I'd like to call up everyone that takes a pardon Building Safety Month. I told you I was going to do this. So permits, planner reviewers, inspectors, I got code enforcement, representatives, I got the Fire Marshal's Office. Please join me up front. Thank you. All right, we got everybody. Building Safety Month reminds us of the critical work that takes place behind the scenes every day in our city. From performing fire safety and building inspections to permits, plan reviews, code enforcement. These teams are dedicated to protecting our residents and ensuring that the built environment is safe and sound. I would also like to recognize Dwayne Zvatek for his achievement of the Master Code Professional Certification. This demonstrates an amazing level of knowledge and commitment. This certification is incredibly rare, with only about twelve hundred individuals worldwide having earned it. Dwayne's dedication represents the very best of what we strive for in public safety and professional excellence. Thank you, Dwayne, for all that you do for the city, and thank everybody up here for the roles you play in providing building safety for the citizens of Sugar Land. I know Mike wanted to say something from the fire real fast, if that's okay. Yeah.
On behalf of Community Risk Reduction and Fire Marshal's Office, we just, we want to commend the Building Department, permits, and just everybody that's just an awesome team to work with. You guys do an invaluable job with the city, the processes, and it is, it's, it's, it's underlooked probably by the general public how important that your job is, and the quality of work, and the safety in the buildings that you guys do. It's great working with you guys.
Joshua, we've got proclamation, Building Safety Month, May of 2025. Whereas the safety of our homes, buildings, and infrastructure is vital to our community's well-being and resilience, both in daily life and during disasters, and whereby we rely on dedicated professionals such as building safety, fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, tradespeople, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure our buildings are safe. And whereas these professionals, in partnership with the International Code Council, help develop and enforce modern building codes and standards that protect us from natural hazards like hurricanes, floods, earthquakes, and wildfires, ensuring safety in the places where we live, work, and play. And whereas Building Safety Month, led by the International Code Council, recognizes the essential work of code officials and encourages us to learn more about building safety, the 2025 theme, "Game On," inspires everyone to take part in building safety awareness globally, locally, and globally. Joshua, let me hand that to you. We've got a special recognition for Dwayne on your certification, Dwayne. This is recognition of achievement presented to Dwayne Zvatek. We proudly recognize Dwayne Zvatek for achieving the prestigious Master Code Professional Certification, the highest level of certification offered by the International Code Council. This elite designation demonstrates exceptional knowledge and expertise in the application and enforcement of building codes. The MCP certification is awarded to individuals who have successfully passed a rigorous series of technical exams across multiple disciplines, including building, electrical, mechanical, plumbing, energy, and fire codes. It requires not only extensive experience in code administration and inspection, but also a deep understanding of how to interpret and apply codes to ensure structures are safe, efficient, and compliant. Fewer than eleven hundred professionals worldwide, eleven hundred professionals worldwide have earned this credential, making Dwayne's accomplishment a truly remarkable achievement. His dedication to excellence and continuous professional development directly supports our mission, the City of Sugar Land, of ensuring the safety, sustainability, and resilience of the built environment. This recognition also ties in meaningfully with our proclamation of Building Safety Month, highlighting our department's commitment to building safety and to protecting the health and well-being of our community and citizens. Wayne, congratulations.
I'll make it, make it short. Chief Building Official, Josh Doyle, I want to thank you very much for supporting me on this journey. Thank you very much.
Our next recognition is National EMS Week, and I'm going to get Mark Campesi, our Fire Chief, to come on down, introduce the topic for us. With the firefighters, you want to get, let's get the firefighters. Come on down, guys. Gals, let's go.
Nice straight line. Looks good. Sure. Got a pack, got a pack in.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much for the opportunity tonight to brag on the men and women of the Sugar Land Fire Department. Tonight, we're joined with the B Shift. We got Ladder Four, Ladder Seven, Medic Two, Medic Six, Engine One. That wasn't on the list. The Battalion Chief and Ops One taking a break from, from their busy life. This is National EMS Week, and like we've presented to you guys recently with our annual report, one uniform every emergency. This is, this is the group, this is the men and women that respond to all medical emergencies in the city, and we couldn't be more blessed to have a great workforce to do that work, and we're even more blessed with the support we have from council and the awesome community. It's not just EMS Week for us. This, this year celebrates ten years of transport EMS service in the Sugar Land Fire Department. We started in 2015 with buying three ambulances and, and taking over that service from the county. And since then, it hasn't been our mindset to just be good enough. I like to say, good enough isn't good enough if it isn't better, and better isn't better if it isn't best. And so we're constantly striving to be better for the citizens because they deserve it. And so I'm honored to be up here with these guys and girls tonight and to celebrate them for this week.
You know, Mark, I was, I was here, I was on council when we, when we stood it up. And I remember the reason we stood it up is we said our citizens deserve better service, not with the criticism of the county, better service than the, the service they were able to provide. And I remember Mayor Thompson said, we think we can do that better because we do everything better. And we stood it up, and, and the men and women that are y'all now have truly made us proud, and we, we appreciate everything that you do for us. Let me, let me read the proclamation. National EMS Week, May 18th through the 25th. Whereas emergency medical services are a vital public service, and the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas during National EMS Week, we recognize and express our heartfelt gratitude to the one hundred and thirty-one dedicated, highly trained, and qualified emergency medical responders of the Sugar Land Fire Department, who selflessly respond to over eighty-five-hundred EMS calls annually, delivering hospital-level emergency care directly to the people of Sugar Land. And whereas the theme of EMS Week 2025, "We Care for Everyone," reflects the unwavering commitment of emergency medical personnel to provide compassionate and inclusive care to all members of our community. Whereas this year marks a significant milestone for the City of Sugar Land Fire Department, ten years of providing ambulance service to the community, a testament to the department's continuous pursuit of excellence in emergency medical care. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. Tonight, we've got a very special recognition. Someone that she and I have worked together since 2001. I'm going to ask Ms. Kayla Samick and her husband Larry, if you guys could please come down. Council members, I'm going to ask you to come off the dais, stand with me. Carol, you were on council when Kayla was here. If you'd come down, please. Meredith, Mike, Carol, Linda. Most people don't know the role that Kayla plays. So Kayla has been, since I've been on council in 2012, she has handled not only the calendars, but our email, all of our agendas, all of our events. You can only imagine, seven council members, all of us going in different directions, all of us with, you know, different relationships, different priorities, different everything. And she did it, and I never, ever, ever heard her complain, ever. She did it with grace and a smile. Larry, you were great to allow us to have so much of her time. And they are, their daughter is in, up in Austin with her husband Tyler, Mallory and Tyler, and their two little granddaughters. And they were getting ready to relocate up there, and we've teased each other. She said, well, I'm going to leave right after, right before you leave. And I said, well, that, that, that kind of works. I wish it weren't so. I think all the council members would prefer it not be so, but it, it's, you've been a real blessing. You've been a godsend to the Sugar Land City Council and for all of us, and for all that you've done for us. And I can tell you, you know, you and I have worked together for a long time, and it's been absolute delight. You know, you've been a professional in every respect, Kayla, and I want to, I want to thank you. And Larry, I want to thank you too. You guys have been part of, you guys are part of the Sugar Land family, even though you're going to be in Georgetown in a very short while. So we wish you all the best. We've got a proclamation. Kayla, we, we kind of surprised you, although you get to see the agenda, so you knew something was up. Honoring Ms. Kayla Samick, June 2nd, 2025. Whereas Kayla Samick has faithfully and honorably served the citizens of the City of Sugar Land for an extraordinary twenty-four years, exemplifying unwavering integrity, professionalism, and dedication in every aspect of her work. And whereas Kayla began her career with the city in March of 2001 as a Senior Secretary in the City Council Office, advancing to Executive Secretary, and ultimately serving in her current position of Executive Assistant. And whereas during her remarkable tenure, Kayla has provided steadfast support, steadfast support to the City Council Office, working alongside twenty-four council members and four mayors. We've only had ten, so. Whereas Kayla's institutional knowledge, professionalism, and unwavering commitment to public service has significantly contributed to the efficient operation of the council office and the service of our elected officials, and her legacy will forever be cherished. Kayla, congratulations. This time, we're going to open to public comment. Public comment's open to anybody that wants to comment on an active agenda item. You'll be given three minutes. Again, I'd ask that you comment only on the active agenda items. Our first guest, Carol McCutcheon.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Carol McCutcheon. Just have a quick question about the proposed contract for creative placemaking at about the proposed contract for creative placemaking at 115 and 123 Brook Street. I was just curious what other locations were considered, and how this particular location at 115 and 123 Brook Street was selected. And I know it's on the consent agenda, but maybe someone will ask that question for me. So, thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Our second guest is Sugar Khan. She wants to speak on 7B.
Mayor Zimmerman, Sugar Land City Council. First, I would like to say congratulations to Mr. Ferguson and Ms. McCutcheon for doing so well in the race. Mayor Zimmerman, I respectfully ask you again, since you prayed for Israel, please, can we have a prayer for Palestine?
I'm sorry. Cut the mic, please. This has nothing to do with the agenda item. You've been told that you can only comment on an active agenda item. Please step away from the mic, please. Step away from the mic now. Officers.
Our tax dollars are funding a genocide.
For our own citizens, for helping for our own people.
We're going to recess, and we're going to clear the room. This time, we're going to go ahead and reconvene the meeting. Again, I'll just give you one more warning. If you're disruptive, I will call you out, we will single you out, and you'll be banned for 90 days from a council meeting. We don't have anybody else signed up for public speaking, so we're going to move on to item number six. Item number seven, Consent Agenda. All the items on the consent agenda will be taken as one motion unless a council member wants to pull one. Councilmember Bocher wants to pull items, Jane K., we're going to go ahead and pull those. We're going to go ahead and take action on all the other agenda items.
Motion approved, all by Jane K.
Okay, got a motion by Jacobson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second by Watley. Got to be quicker. If you'll vote at this time, please. We'll do a hand vote. Hand vote. Hand vote, right hand. And it, it passes 6 to 0. Item number 7J, Contract with Better Block Foundation. Consideration of an Action on Authorization of a Contract with the Better Block Foundation in the Amount of $134,750 for Design and Execution Services of a Creative Placemaking Project at 115 and 123 Brook Street. Yeah, Cherie?
Yes, Civic Arts Manager. And I don't have a presentation for you today, but I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. All right. So, last Friday, we had the pleasure of discussing this. And really, what I was asking was the scope of the project, what all it entailed, and what the vision was for that plot of land. Last we left it off, it was basically a survey to figure out what to do with the land. I'm not sure if there's more that you can add today to discuss the scope of the project. I'll let you.
Absolutely. So Build Better Blocks is an international placemaking group. They use creative placemaking to transform spaces that are underutilized. So, the space at 115 and 123 is the old art building that is scheduled for demolition, that will be knocked down. It's right across the street from the Imperial Sugar Factory. So, the plan is to activate that space and turn it into what we would call as an art park. So, there'll be a ton of art installations, functional art benches, murals, things like that, for people to sit. We can activate it for live music, and it'll be active for six months. All of that then belongs to the city afterwards. We'll be able to, basically, they set up a website where they can create surveys. The residents can survey of what they'd like to see in this park. The actually residents actually help us build the park, and then afterward, we activate it. We have artists come in, we have live music come in. If the citizens want to activate it, they can do that as well, and it'll be in that space for six months. With it being across the street from Imperial, it really gives us the opportunity to see what those residents are hoping to find in that area. All of that data then belongs to the city afterwards, and it will help us find out what is best for that area in general, based on what the actual residents voted for.
Follow up. So, that brings me back to the original point. So, for the 134K that we're spending on the project, what is the final deliverable? What does the city get for that?
All of the furnishings, the, basically, everything. The survey, the website, the furnishings, the workshops, the building. We do a lot of printing from CNC machines. So, after we design the benches, the citizens help us design the benches. We actually take it to a CNC machine, we print it off, and then we build them on site, and we create this whole temporary park that'll be located there. And so, that's the deliverables. Afterwards, we keep all of that, along with the survey, along with all the reviews from the park, and all of the activation data to figure out what it is that we want to do in other districts in order to activate them with creative placemaking. So, it's a big experiment. We'll actually be working with redevelopment as well. We'll actually be working with a couple other departments who'll be activating in that space to test out programming that they've been hoping to try. So, it's a really big test incubator for us to try different things. But everything that's built in that space then belongs to the Civic Arts Division afterwards.
Okay. So, are we building any buildings or benches, or?
We're building benches, buildings, arcs. We'll be doing murals. We'll actually have a big cutout trailer, kind of similar to the, what do you call it? The big trailers, the shipping containers. So, they'll have a shipping container that's out there that's cut and designed for us to activate in numerous ways. So, we can activate it as a vendor space, we can activate it as a cafe or a store, and then all of that stays there. Murals will be painted on that, murals will be painted on all the other equipment out there, and we activate it as a big creative placemaking park. But then on top of that, my favorite part, is the data. That's not to be overlooked. This program has been run in over 300 cities, and it's been ran internationally. After they run this program, millions of dollars of grants are able to be given to those cities in order to make sure that they can have the information and then the funding to reform underutilized areas. What we don't have, especially for the Arts Division, is data. We don't have any data on what it is the city wants to see as far as artists concerned. Over the last three years that I've been with the city, we've been able to really reach out to the city and find out what it is that the actual residents want to see. But as we're developing at Imperial Sugar, this will be across the street from that with the residents, across from Imperial's Farmer's Market in walking distance, where people can actually come there and give us a true, real feedback on what it is they're hoping to see in the city. This is more than just a creative placemaking initiative. This is a data collection tool and an incubator where all divisions and departments can experiment with what it is their programing looks like, so we can stick to the strategic initiatives when planning out what it is that we want to do for the year.
And then, do you mind covering what the funding source is?
4B.
4B?
Any other questions on this agenda item? Any other questions on this agenda item? Motion to approve? I'll make the motion. Second by Miller. All in favor, please vote. When does that go through? There we go. Okay. Okay. So, we've got, we've got a 5-1 vote. It passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 7K, Contract with Florida Traffic Control Devices LLC. Consideration of an Action on Authorization of a Construction Contract with Florida Traffic Control Devices LLC for the University Boulevard Widening CIP CST 2102, in the Amount of $1,678,534.4 in Authorization of a Budget Amendment from the 2019 Geo Bond Fund, Proposition C, in the Amount of $1,592,596.88. We have Huiton, our Senior Engineering Manager. Hoi?
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I am Huiton with the Engineering Department. I don't have a presentation for you, but I'm here to answer any questions.
Rob, do you have questions?
Yeah, it comes back to the scopes. And when we talked about this last Friday, this was for University Boulevard and the signals, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
This is just for This is just for the signal.
Just for the signals?
We did the expansion. We add a left turn lane, so the existing signal is currently not up to standard. So we need to replace all the old signal and extend the arm, putting new juice shaft in there, so for the left turn lane.
Yes. So in the scope, it says the signal poles are 355, 355,000, and a lot of the existing infrastructure is already there for the signal controls and everything else. So I guess I'm just curious where the extra 1.2 million is going, if you want to elaborate on that.
So basically, we had a bid for the signal that's not including the materials. So the material, the pole and the signal, the CD going to order that from ours contract, because the contractor supplied all that signal to the CD. So the 1.2, 1.6 is for the contractor to put in the juice shaft and connect all the stuff in there.
Was it an itemized bid? Or a lump sum?
So the engineering estimate is roughly 1.5. I cannot go to detail because I cannot get it off the top of my head, but the contractor bid for 1.6, so a little bit higher than the engineering estimate.
Yeah, that was the low bid, was the 1.6.
Yes.
Correct. Okay. Any other questions? I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a second by Watley. Vote at this time, please. It passes six to zero. Thank you, Hoy. Moving on now to item number eight. Ordinances and Resolutions, 8A. First and final consideration. Consideration of an action on City of Sugar Land, ordinance number 2376. An ordinance authorizing the issuance of City of Sugar Land, Texas, General Obligation Bond Series 2025. Jing Zhao, our Director of Finance. Jing?
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of City Hangzhou. Ordinance number 2376 is to authorize the issuance of the city planned Geo bond for fiscal year 2025. So like we all know, Geo bond, our voter authorized the debt. So this 2025 issuance is to fund 18 projects with a total cost of about $27,450,000. So within this amount, $25,650,000 was authorized by voters in 2024 bond election. And this is the first issuance for the total $350 million, the bond package. The rest, 1.8 million, was authorized by voters in 2019. So 2019 bond package, we have four propositions, all three already being issued. The only unissued portion is the proposition number four on animal shelter. So this 1.8 is part of the 6.6. So this is the list of the detailed projects. Details can be found in our FY25 capital budget book. So as required, the city has engaged with S&amp;P and Fitch to provide rating for our Geo bonds. So both Fitch and S&amp;P assigned AAA. And while S&amp;P issued a stable outlook, Fitch still assigned a negative outlook with the rating. The justification is merely the same, almost the same, as what they provided us in April for our COs. So we still have a very strong rating. So the sale happened this morning. We received eight bids. The winner is Huntington Securities, Inc. The interest cost for the city is 4.06. Again, this rate is a really good rate.
That's good rate.
So we're very happy with this result. So the closing is scheduled on June 18th. The city will receive money on that day. Recommendation, so the staff recommend that City Council approve ordinance 2376, authorizing the issuance of Sugar Land, Texas, General Obligation Bonds, Series 2025.
Thank you, Jane. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Suzanne?
Thank you. My question is regarding Proposition C and 2024 drainage. And when I was going through all of these, I realized that 2019 still had drainage. And this is for clarification, because I do know the answer. But when we look at 2019, we still have drainage projects, and we still have funding from the 2019 Geo Bond for drainage. So the question is, can you explain why we're moving to 2024 Geo bond and funding that before we fund the 2019 remaining drainage?
We try to align our issues with our projects. So for this question, I think I have to, I need help from our engineer.
Thank you. Hi, Jesse Lee.
Welcome, Jesse.
Hello, good evening. Jesse Lee, Civic Engineer. We do have one outstanding 2019 Geo project that hasn't been built, because we have easement right-of-way accretion going on with one lead property. So that one is holding us up. We haven't started construction on that one yet. Okay, and the answer is, we just have to do them in line as where they come to fruition, where we need to do the project. It's not a matter of funding one before the other. It's just where we are in doing the projects, correct? When we need the money, they will sell the debt for the project.
Yeah, we haven't acquired the easement we need in order to construct and do the construction.
All right, and I kind of knew the answer. I just wanted to be clear. The other one is the animal shelter. I've heard that it's said that some people want it moved ahead faster than it's moving, and we've talked about that. I asked you a couple weeks ago. Can you explain why that is not a possibility at this time? Well, we already started the project. We had a design kickoff meeting, I believe, last week. So the project is on track. It's in the design. And it's moving as fast as it possibly can? Correct. Okay, thank you. Motion to approve.
Okay, got a...
Follow-up question?
Motion by Jacobson. I've got a second by Watley.
Hey, Joe, can I have a follow-up question?
A follow-up?
Yeah. Just follow-up on the animal shelter. Do you have a timetable of what you're looking at for the total schedule? Just like you got your lease at some point?
Yes, correct. We're doing the design this year, and hopefully, we will start construction next year. Design probably take approximately 10 to 12 months, and construction probably 12 to 18 months.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else? I've got a motion by Jacobson, second by Watley. If you vote at this time, please. And it passes six to zero. Item number 8B. First and final consideration. Consideration of an action on City of Sugar Land, ordinance number 2377. An ordinance authorizing the issuance of City of Sugar Land, Texas Water Works and Sewer System Revenue Bond Series 2025. Jing?
Thank you. So this ordinance is for our revenue bound, utility revenue bound. So the procedure is very similar. So revenue bounds are used for our utility system-related capital improvement projects, and the bound is supported by the revenue generated from the utility system, mainly from user fee. It's not supported by tax. So the city's five-year CIP plan include a total approximately $222 million bond issuance. Again, the 16, I think it's total 16, projects. Those projects are approved or have been approved within the city's FY25 capital improvement project budget. So the detail also can be found in the budget document. Same thing, bond rating. We engaged S&amp;P and Fitch to provide rating for our utility bond. Both rating agencies assigned AA rating with stable outlook. Basically, the reason is for our utility system healthy financial metrics, low cost, and our strong customer base. Sale also happened this morning. We also received eight bids for this bound, and the winner is JP Morgan Security. The interest cost is 4.477. And the closing is scheduled on the same day, June 18th. And the staff recommendation, we recommend that City Council approve ordinance 2377, authorizing the issuance of Sugar Land, Texas Water Works and Sewer System Revenue Bonds, Series 2025.
Questions of staff? Do I have a motion? Got a motion by Miller. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ferguson. You vote at this time, please.
Thank you.
Passes six, zero. Thank you, Jing. This time, we're going to move to item number nine. City Council City Manager Reports. I'm going to ask that we defer the city council reports. Mike, do you have anything?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll move then to item number 10, is adjournment, and we'll adjourn at 6:45 PM. And we'll stay right here.